Welcome to the Mid-Ohio Valley Public Forum Video Podcast. This podcast features issues of interest to the Mid-Ohio Valley residents, mainly encompassing Wood County, West Virginia, and Washington County, Ohio. Right now with the coronavirus pandemic, civic life has changed greatly in our nation.
And this is an election year. One of the things that's changed is that candidates can't get out and campaign for office the way they normally would. Generally, this time of year, they'd be out there knocking on your door, going to fairs and festivals and soup bean dinners and kissing babies and shaking hands. They can't do any of that right now.
So many of our initial podcasts will feature interviews with candidates for local office. If you're a candidate and we haven't reached out to you yet, please contact us either through our Facebook page, that's MOV Public Forum, or via email,
Today, we'll be interviewing Eric Barber. Eric is the council member for District 4, which happens to be the district I live in, and he's running for reelection. District 4 is the area surrounding the Church of the Good Shepherd, which most people know is the Pink Church, but it's a stretched-out district. It's the only one that covers territory on both sides of the river, because although it's mostly on the north end, there is a small strip over there by Badger Lumber on the south side that's in District 4. Another thing to know about District 4 is it is the most economically disadvantaged district in the city. So, welcome, Eric. We're glad you could make yourself available today.
Well, good morning, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to reach out to the voters via livestream. Like you mentioned earlier, with the pandemic, things are very challenging, and these are unique and challenging times. However, our voting process and how we go about electing our officials, that process would continue. So, you and Jennifer should be applauded for making this available to the constituents, the voters, and the public. If you guys didn't do this, who would? You know, so you guys did. You guys should be, done a wonderful thing here. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, let's dive right in. How would you introduce yourself as a candidate? Do you have an elevator speech? For example, if we were traveling on an elevator and you had only the time between floors to convince me to vote for you, what would you say?
Well, that would be a difficult way to campaign. Normally, what I've found to be most effective is, you know, the door-to-door, and you'd get a little bit more time than, you know, just the trip between floors. But I would certainly focus on conservatism and partisan, you know, values that are important to one group of voters if I had to just grab someone within, you know, 45 seconds. But, you know, normally, in the real-world applications, you get a little bit more time to focus on things that are more important to the average voter. City services, conditions of neighborhoods, state of lawlessness in the city, infrastructure, these are things that are most important to the average voter.
So, what is motivating you to run for office again? What's the main thing that made you decide to step up and run for another term?
Well, if I'm nothing, I've always been candid and open and honest, even though when that opinion wasn't most popular. Or, so, I'm not gonna switch things up. I will be completely honest. The lead-up to filing for office, there's a certain amount of excitement that revolves around that and energy, and it's like, it's hard to describe, but when there's a race, when there's a filing deadline approaching and everybody's wondering who's gonna be in the races and who's not, sometimes it can be hard not to wanna seek out some of that competition or, you know, just put yourself up to the measuring stick. And then, I was very reluctant, I'll be honest. I didn't really want to seek out reelection, but some people did say that I should, and these are people that I have a lot of respect for, and I was always apt to try to listen to their opinion. But, once again, I'm a reluctant candidate for a number of reasons, but, you know, we'll let it play out. We'll see what democracy has in store for me. So, it's been an interesting ride so far.
What would you say is your wow factor? In other words, what do you think someone would hear about you or your candidacy that would make them say, "Wow, I wanna vote for him"?
Well, there's a certain amount of appreciation for people who will offer unfiltered, authentic, and transparent opinions, even if they are abrasive, even if they are unpopular. Oftentimes, their statements are true, and true statements can be the most offensive to certain people. I've never been afraid to say what I think or quote how some people have labeled it, how it is. Kind of modeled myself to an extent, you know, after the Trump approach, for better or for worse. So, that would be the wow impact. You know, he'll say something that isn't popular, but maybe needed said. That always, doesn't always bring the best results, but sometimes you win issues and topics with it.
So, this is two parts. If you're reelected, what is the one thing you really want to accomplish in the next term of office? And number two, is there a city ordinance that you would like to see abolished or changed or created?
So, that's, that second part of the question's really easy or interesting. That's something that you'd have to stop and kind of consider. There's always things that needed to be maybe modified or adjusted. However, one of the things that I've discovered is that for almost every issue or topic or situation, concern, complaint, criticism, whatever, there's already an existing ordinance in place for it. It's not, in many cases, being applied or enforced or followed or turned into, you know, effective policy. So, to just craft up laws and stuff because, you know, you have a certain issue, sometimes there's normally an underlying reason why it's not being taken care of with the effective tools in place. Now, the first half of the question was, was what?
What's the one thing you'd really like to accomplish during your next term?
Well, it was the thing I wanted to accomplish during this council term. So, I went door-to-door and said to the constituents and the people I petitioned to vote for me that I would like to restore law and order, effectively combat the lawlessness situation in their neighborhood, and I also wanted to make an effective effort at curbing blight and removing it. Now, during the campaign in '16, we were tearing down a lot of houses. We were banging it. We were turning down anywhere from nine to 12 every quarter. There was a grant provided, it was a loan forgiveness or a zero-interest loan that Mayor Newell and Ricky Yeager had built together, and it was, it was running great. So, that hasn't been the case in this council term. So, if reelected, one of my major goals would be to craft up and have council approve a similar measure that was introduced and successfully administered and put out by Mayor Newell. That program has a specific name, but it alludes me. Charleston, Huntington, Morgantown, Clarksville, several cities in this re, you know, state have, in very recent months, you know, last couple of years, taken huge swings at demolitions and blight. Now, have they went into significant debt to do that? Yes, they have. And that's one of the arguments that I hear when I suggest this program. However, the blight is such a huge public risk. We cannot continue to ignore it. A firefighter's gonna get hurt eventually. We've had a couple of warning shots with, you know, firemen getting flash burns and, you know. But, how long before a city-owned property that's slated for demo or needed to be demoed by all reasonable measures hurts someone, you know, a first responder or even, you know, a transient person who, you know, just, for whatever reason, is inside that structure? So, that would be my number-one goal, and that would be what I would consider my biggest failure on council. So, if reelected, having council approve a meaningful demo initiative similar to what other cities have done and similar to what we have done in the past would be my number-one goal.
How do you feel about compromise?
Well, when I first came into office, I was all about it. I thought compromise is the most wonderful thing ever, and we all should strive to be moderate, centrist people willing to reach across both sides of the divide and seek out a center solution. So, the longer I've been down there, the more I've found that that's difficult. That's, that's, that's challenging, to say the least. Now, you can do it on a lot of moderate or routine issues. A lot of the things that maybe don't get the huge public coverage, much easier to compromise and find a central solution. But, I like compromise, and I've seen it done many times in this council term, but some things can't be compromised on, and you're stuck in your position, and it is what it is. Politics is a, sometimes a divisive theater of operations. It's not always easy to come to an agreement.
How well do you think you play with others? And can you describe some examples?
Well, I've played well with others many times, but there's other times, obviously, that I've felt the need to be a little bit less, you know, cordial and a little bit more aggressive and opinionated. Case in point, where time, where, you know, I wasn't so-called playing well with others as the, you know, small-home program in your A debate that we ask nicely, nicely, nice, and you play well. You're kind, you're patient, and you're not rocking the boat on a specific issue that's extremely important to not only yourself, but your district and the health of the city. Well, then, then it's time not to play well with others. But, to answer your question, one of the most recent times that I've played well with others, and I'm very proud of, is I worked with Planned Parenthood recently in a legislative session. I worked with the ACLU, and these were issues and topics that we were in agreement with. Now, to say the state representatives of Planned Parenthood or, you know, the organizers, the president, executive directors, et cetera, of ACLU don't know who Councilman Barber is, that would be, that would be laughable. Yet, they were willing to work with me as well. So, the feminine hygiene bill that did not pass the state legislative session would have mandated and provided female prisoners from the juvenile level to the regional jail facilities to the state level, you provide feminine hygiene items free of charge by the state. This whole program would have cost $30,000 to the state's annual budget. Now, that's pennies. And for whatever reason, the legislative session, on the House side, did not pick up the procedural motion that would have allowed it a floor vote, and that was disappointing. But, I did work not only all day in person with representatives from Planned Parenthood and ACLU on more than one occasion, but I found them to be cordial and friendly and not, not the boogeyman that sometimes your partisan opinions may make them out to be. So, when a valued concern, something important that I think should be important to everyone presents itself, it's easy, and criminal justice reform is one of the really easy things to experience bipartisan cooperation and playing well with some, you know, the other side that sometimes don't play well with. So, I'm proud of that, and there's some things in City Hall that I was able to accomplish by playing well and seeking out compromise and being polite, kind, and patient.
What do you think your worst enemy would say is your worst quality?
Well, I heard this question was coming, and the joke was I was gonna say, "Well, you tell me." But, I'm unfair, and I don't think you look at me as an enemy. But, well, I don't know. I've never, I've certainly received a tremendous amount of feedback from those who look at me in an adversarial view. So, so, yeah. I don't know. I think that would be for the people who are not satisfied with me to really, to really share. But, you know, that was the thing that's disappointing the most to me is, and I'm guilty of feeding into it, but, you know, I've said a few times, it is a response. But, I lived a very quiet life, and I was very kind, and most people thought, "Well, he's a really nice fellow. Kind of charming, easy to talk to. You know, I like him." But, there was probably only about 300 people in the entire city who even knew I existed. I would say there's at least 3,000 people in this city who really dislike me, and maybe even about 300 people that if I got hit by a car, they'd kind of be happy. So, you know, that was the most difficult thing to absorb is the amount of anger and outright hatred that I've experienced projected at me for whatever reasons. You know, sometimes they can be expected, but sometimes they go too far. So, that's, that's been a difficult. But, if not elected, if offered relief from the burden of legislative duty, one of the things I really look forward to is not being a center of hatred and having strong partisan enemies. I will look forward to not having those circumstances in my life.
What do you think is your best quality?
Well, once again, you know, telling it like it is. You know, if I think away and I feel opinionated enough about it, and I feel like the opinion probably should be shared, even though it's not gonna be received that well, I'll throw it out there. Not afraid to rock the boat occasionally. But, in the last couple of years, I've learned that maybe that's not always appreciated or effective, and sometimes it does more harm than good. Case in point, when, when really fighting hard in a budget hearing for homecoming allocations, the, I saw the handwriting on the wall. I knew what the vote was gonna be, but I still fought for it. And I think at some point, it drew out, it drew out statements and drew out rhetoric from other people that may not have been shared or said, but because I just wouldn't power down on the issue that was probably already lost. You know, it, so, it's not always effective, and I've learned downtown that certain criticisms, opinions, and insight, unsolicited especially, isn't always appreciated and certainly has, I don't wanna say the word consequences, but some things are just better if you try to make your battles. And there's a lot of things that I would like to speak publicly on, but I don't. And there's some things that I do speak publicly about that I shouldn't, but it is what it is. I'll speak my mind, and I'm completely transparent and authentic. There's no doubt about that.
Well, political officeholders are leaders. Describe your leadership style.
Most people would say, could describe it depending on their views on certain political issues. I would always, once again, say authentic, transparent, you know, certainly at times abrasive, but at other times, I would consider my leadership effective. So, to put one label on it would be hard, but there's a lot of facets to each individual, and no one's really just simplified. One of the most surprising things about being exposed to all the different leaders and the inside workings of the machine, you know, City Hall, was the people are all, have qualities, you know, certainly, and they have redeeming, you know, components about themselves, but everyone else is flawed. Everyone down here, I'm a little bit more public with some of my flaws, and they're easier, you know, I'm more transparent with who I am. But, every person down there has good qualities and bad. But, to say, you know, describe one person's leadership in one word, that's really challenging, no matter if it's me or any other candidate or person currently serving.
What would you say are your personal core values?
Well, at this, at this point, I think everyone's kind of, for many of us, have grown, evolved, assimilated in different ways. One of the ways that I've kind of assimilated, and it's through some of the experiences that I've went through in the last three and a half years or three years, is, you know, my conservatism is probably one of my, you know, core political values. So many people were surprised that knew me for my whole life when they found out, one, that I was running for city council, but I was running as a Democrat. Those people were completely shocked, but I did that for reasons. And I was willing to serve, continue to serve as a Democrat as a moderate, centrist style. Unfortunate things occurred, and out of, born out of that was, you know, a leadership style or a value core component of conservatism. Now, as a person, I made, I made a homemade camera stand. My faith has always been important to me. You know, many people who I've spoke to about this, you know, in death, know that I was baptized in prison. And through, through my young adulthood, as I, you know, surpassed and become older than 40 by one year, you know, that becomes more and more important to me. As you have a family, as you mature, that becomes more and more of something you put a lot more value and importance on. But, those two things would be my two core values, as far as politically speaking. My faith, component of faith and my belief in conservative values.
So, do you know your win number?
No, I've not put much insight or really optimism in my reelection prospects. So, I haven't really, and it's been very low on my priority list. I've had many, many things going on in my personal life that is, you know, higher prioritized than my reelection prospects. So, just off the top of my head, you, I mean, you know as well as me, you guys look at the numbers, voter turnout, and District 4 is very low. Unfortunately for me, the Republican primary for mayor has been quite sporty. So, there's a lot of people signing up that have never voted before who are voting for, in the Republican primary, and that may not bode well for me. I'm concerned about the mail-in ballots. Thinking in hearing, and, you know, scuttlebutt is that some people are filling out mail-in ballots by first-time voters, and there's some stuff, but, but to put a number on it in a traditional year, I think 100, maybe 150 at max in a Republican primary in my district. So, you know, 75 to 80 would do it. But, it's hard to say. These elections, I didn't expect to win the first one, so these elections are terribly difficult to predict. So, you know, at this point, I'm measuring, I'm wondering how many votes certain people are gonna win by, how many votes crowded primaries are gonna take away or combine percentages. I'm kind of looking at different numbers throughout all the races, and I'm having a hard time coming up with numbers that I feel solid and safe about, and that's including my race. So, if I, if I win, I'll be surprised, as surprised as the first time I won, if not more so. But, if I, if I do lose, I'm hoping not more, not more than 30 votes. You know, I'm kind of wondering if I'm gonna get crushed, just to be transparent and authentic, share some of my, you know, unfiltered insecurities as a politician. But, you know, I'm a realist. I'm a, I'm a unique figure. It's hard to predict a lot, because there's so many different contributing factors. So, to make a really long answer short, I have no idea.
What do you see as the main role of a city council person in a strong mayor operating city like Parkersburg?
Well, the main one, it's so hard. There's so many, there's so many responsibilities that, one, I was shocked to learn a council person had. A lot of oversight, a lot of approval processes that require a council member to be informed and to have what I feel like a very weighty position at times. I mean, you're making some really important decisions that appear routine to the, to the layman observer, but if you really consider what's occurring, you know, I'm kind of shocked. But, it is the process of legislative, executive, and, you know, not so much our case, judicial. The legislative responsibility is no less significant at the municipal level than it is at the state or even the federal. So, there's some, there's some incredible responsibilities. But, to put one as the main one, it's hard to say. It's just oversight of the executive branch is really important. Having, having a, a council person who's willing to, to say something isn't right when they observe it, that's important, and that's lacking. Even I'm sometimes very hesitant to say that for several reasons that I may share once I'm not in office. But, it's a weighty position, and I don't think anybody should take it lightly. It's, but it's hard to say, you know. I mean, everyone would have an opinion, I think, different, but just the, just the oversight of the executive branch. I mean, and at a macro level, and a micro level, there's, there's a lot of stuff that goes on. So, I don't know. It's been, it's been an eye-opening and, and interesting experience, to say the least, being a council member.
If you're reelected, what will you enjoy the least about serving?
Continuing to be a public figure. It's hard to take a position, especially when the community is strongly divided. Motorized bicycles, non-discrimination ordinance, the prayer suit. I could go on and on and on. And whether you make a decision for one side or the other, or for one opinion or the other, or perspective, you're gonna be seen as someone who did something wrong by a group, or, and that's not pleasant, or the failures and shortcomings of the city, which there are many. You know, for people to say, "Oh, you, you're horrible, and you're not doing your job. You don't care." That's a difficult thing to absorb, because, you know, many of us do care, particularly myself, when it comes to blight and those issues and lawlessness. But, there's, there's limiting circumstances that make it really difficult to bring back that change that I believe so strongly in as what I describe as a naive candidate. But, it's not easy being a council member or a public figure, and I'll be glad when, when I'm allowed, I'm allowed my, my reprise and the albatross of public service is lifted from my neck.
What excites you most about the prospect of continuing to serve on city council?
So, being on city council at times is really exciting and rewarding, and there's times where it's super fun and a high privilege and a super great honor. Anyone who enjoys four years on the city council will appreciate that experience for the rest of their lives. I am certain of it. And I think a lot of different people should experience four years on the city council, and I think far more people should experience a candidacy for elected office. It's, it's, it's very rewarding, and it reinforces a lot of positive perspectives and things that, you know, sometimes people don't see. But, the high privilege and the wonderful honor of serving in such a significant position and being a leader, it's, it's humbling. it's, it's humbling, and it's humbling for me to think that I was able to be provided this experience by the citizens of, of Parkersburg. And there's times where I feel like I've let them down a little bit. And, but there's, there's always gonna be a deep appreciation for, for my hometown city and for the, the process that's, you know, afforded to every American citizen in this great republic known as the United States of America, so. That's, that's what I look at, public service, and really look at fondly.
So, as a citizen of Parkersburg, tell me what you're most proud of about our city?
I'm proud of most of the people. If you go door to door as a candidate, you will find that the vast majority of people in this town are wonderful, good people. And it's easy, and the public has a tendency to focus on, you know, all the difference folks, call them zombies, druggies, rehab dropouts, homeless, bums, you can call them all certain names. And, and people do regularly, but at the end of the day, they're still just human beings. And, and every person in Parkersburg is, in, in most ways, good, I think, but we've got a lot of issues. But the vast majority of our people aren't reflected on the scapegoat citizen that, that sometimes Parkersburg has a reputation for having. And that's why I sincerely, sincerely believe that every person would be well rewarded by being a candidate. Because when you go door to door, you, every, most everyone in this community is a really good, hardworking person who just wants to live in a safe, nice neighborhood and in a city with some economic activity going on, so. You know, that's, that's, that's what I really like about Parkersburg, is its people.
Tell us what political office accomplishment you're most proud of?
Okay, I dropped down to five percent battery, so I'll try to make these a little bit brief, for all that's always been difficult for me. So, you know, the splash pad was really neat, and I'm really proud of that, and I'm proud of some of the stuff that we've been able to do with the parks. I know the executive branch has worked really hard on keeping and maintaining the cleanliness and the approved added infrastructure at the City Park Pool, including, you know, access for those with mobility, disability. I'm always gonna be really, really proud of that. The small home program is already underway. We got three of those going in on Thirteenth Street, and I was desperate for just brand-new boards to be nailed together somewhere in my neighborhood. And I'm hopeful some of these non-compliant lots can be utilized and moving forward, this is gonna take a process, you know, some time to establish itself, but to me personally, small home program, I fought very hard for, advocated very strongly for, for several, several months, a couple, three years, I felt like. And, and I'm gonna be proud of that, that's an accomplishment. The two things that I set out to do at my council term remain unfulfilled. There's still a state of lawlessness in my district, and I'm not sure that's gonna change, and there's a lot of reasons why it may not get better and it could get worse. And then, and then my district's on fire. My district's literally burning, and that, that's been difficult and that's been a problem, so. You know, as, as any politician should, they should be self-aware to see their failures, and, and those two things are my biggest failures, so. I, I, maybe I'm a little negative or hard on myself, but some of my accomplishments I may not even cite here, and although they were probably good accomplishments. But I see, I'm looking at my failures and some of my losses. And those were two ones that stick out to me. I certainly have some things to be proud of, and for the most part, my, my voting record, I'm pretty proud of, except for the bicycle ordinance, I might take that one back. Changes that might need to be taken place before this term's over.
So, okay, well Eric, you kind of answered the next question already, but it's tell us about the toughest issue you've had to deal with during your term in office?
Well, the non-discrimination easily was the toughest, most difficult decision you had to make, and I think that was probably the case for all the council members. And, and I had a lot of stuff I wanted to say on the decision was made on non-discrimination night. But yeah, that was, that's a tough one, it still is a tough one. And some of the things, you know, some of my failures in working well with others that we didn't describe earlier, is, as I've made efforts and talked and had conversations with Andrew Schneider to present a non-discrimination or anti-discrimination resolution that would encompass a lot more people than just the marginalized members of our LGBT community, but but unfortunately, we're, it's not, you know, anywhere, a lot of people are afraid of that issue, but that's the non-discrimination, some of the LGBT stuff, that was, that's really, really hard.
How do you see the job of council member changing in the post-COVID-19 world?
I mean, I don't know, it's kind of a legislative process we've been doing for about 220 years. The formats sometimes change at the city level, whether it's strong mayor or not. But immediately, council's got some super, super big-time decisions to make, and once again, they're weighty ones, and if you consider this council term going from non-discrimination ordinance to some other issues, me personally bringing in issues that maybe weren't really needed and, and, you know, inflicting some, some high-profile events. In addition to having the worst crisis this city has faced since probably all the plant closures, that would be the number one comparable event in the last thirty-five years, and Parkersburg City has had to deal with or experience, that was a slow drawn-out process. This is immediate and impactful, and for the city to lose, you know, a whole quarter's worth of revenue, potentially being, you know, fifty percent or more down on revenue for this quarter due to COVID-19 business closures, city council's gonna have some super, super weighty decisions when it comes to, because by law, we have to, we have to have a balanced budget every year. So, you know, you know, COVID-19 in city council, that's, that's, we've got some, we've got some weighty things that are gonna hit our, our lap, and I hope the, the citizens are paying attention and offer some input, because that's always been lacking, especially in this council term. You and a handful of others is it, but you know, I, I would welcome more community involvement in council decisions, that's for certain.
With that, we'll move to the hot seat. This is rapid-fire. One or both of us have been present at nearly every single city council meeting since the current council was sworn in. We've noticed that a lot of what council does is routine and not of much interest to the public. We've also noticed that a lot of issues that come up in council are not controversial and are resolved by unanimous or nearly unanimous vote.
But there have been several hot-button issues that got in a lot of engagement from the public, were controversial and divided the council. So, for the most part, those issues have been resolved for the moment, but they can always crop back up. So, we'd like to get your quick take on them.
So for this purpose, we'll use the support, not support, or support with changes format.
Oh.
Here we go. Non-discrimination ordinance.
At this time, against, and probably will likely remain against, so against.
Motorized bicycle ban.
Well, I'm against now, I ban, but certain modifications need to be made, certainly.
Raising city fees for trash collection, fire, and police protection.
Yeah, man. I lost my fee, I should've.
Raising city fees for trash collection, fire, and police protection.
So, totally against, obviously with my voting record. Not a fan of supporting fee increases, I don't like tax increases. I stated as much in my meet-the-candidate interview in the News and Sentinel that was published in sixteen as a candidate, and I've stuck by those things. When others have told the voters one thing on police and fire fees, and then got in office and done something totally different, I stand in contrast to that, and so, police and fire fees probably didn't need as raised as much as certain frills and unnecessary needs inside the city hall proper, out of government square, probably could have been eliminated. We could have trimmed some waist, some fat hair and there. And, and we certainly weren't presented with the understanding and knowledge that there was gonna be some unencumbered expenses that are mandated to be allocated in a special fund or line item. Suddenly, the state has adjusted its regs and you can use those funds for anything you'd like. So, I would have appreciated that little bit of foresight that was coming before we were presented with a, with a crisis that needed a police and fire fee increase, and so now, just to answer your question, I, I'm totally against fire fee. And furthermore, paper fee. There was an effort by some members on council to raise the paper fee. Not so much, the guise was, "Oh, we need to do a little better on the police and fire," or the police reports, who bill these to the insurance company anyways. I always felt like it was an attempt to obstruct FOIA requests. So, so I'm against any type of fee, tax increases of any sort, and always have been.
Financial support for Parkersburg Homecoming and other civic events, support, not support, or support with changes?
Well, I've always been a hard-line supporter of Homecoming, so I think they need some help, and there's a lot of other events that we support that have a positive impact on our city, so I support allocations of Homecoming. And have, and personally, as a council rep, has gone further than just a yes vote during budget hearings, so.
A fireworks ban.
So, a ban has a, has that government oversight language that I don't like. How about, because that's currently the, the law that's in place right now, it's not like ban. But it's just not enforced. So, opening it up to certain, certain holiday windows that you can, you can legally or you know, permissively by policy of the executive branch, which is the case now. Send off fireworks, which kind of dangerous, but I get it, it's the holidays. I think what would have passed would have been really good, the council proposed a fireworks ordinance that would have allowed for celebratory fireworks on New Year's and, excuse me, July Fourth. But because we wouldn't allow it for the Mountain, the West Virginia Day, then it kind of just fell apart, so. So I'm, the ban is currently in place, I'd like to see something that allowed fireworks and then, and then had a policy in place, whether it's a budget allocation or just by directive of the executive to do some enforcement on fireworks.
Splash pad. Oh, sorry. Splash pad project.
Go ahead.
Splash pad project.
Right, I like it. So I support, but I believe it's complete. We added a slide that I hope is installed this season. Whether the pool's gonna open, I don't know, but you know, obviously, I've been for the splash pad.
A social media or code of conduct policy?
Uh, yeah, I'm against that.
Dumpster fencing and cleanup.
I mean, I'm not, I didn't vote for the dumpster fences either, so, you know. I've seen them constructed and they're not that effective at what they're supposed to do. They're counterproductive in many ways, so I'm against.
Residential property cleanup.
I mean, I've not heard that proposed, so I mean, who, who would be against residential property cleanup? But I would like to see a group of organizers maybe go out there and help some people, even do it for them. But man, it's a, it's a tough road to hoe down there trying to get people to clean up their properties, telling you.
Well, with that, we've come to our wildcard section. These are softball, easy questions. Just designed to give the voters some more information about you personally. What's your favorite thing or place in our city?
Send a couple fastballs across the plate, I don't mind this, no swing.
What's your favorite thing or place in our city?
Well, heck, I don't know. You know what, in many ways, people call District Four the ghetto, or the hood, or the, you tell people where you live and they're shocked and gassed, and they're like, "Oh, oh." But I think, I think District Four will always hold a little special place in my heart, and in some ways, it is my favorite part of the city. The hood being what it is, or whatever, the, the, it, it has a certain amount of charm. I want to get cleaned up, and I want to make some major changes, and I know the neighborhood does, but I like my neighborhood for all of its faults and problems and lawlessness and violence and blight, but, so that's, you know, that's the reason why I run for city councils, because I do like my, my neighborhood to an extent.
So what are you personally passionate about?
I mean, in a political sense, or?
No, personal sense.
I like racing and motorsports, and I like just, you know, car stuff, so. An example is, we didn't even get a chance to announce it, but the go-kart races that we did for Homecoming last year were really successful, well-received, and a lot of skeptics of Homecoming thought that, "Wow, that was a really neat event," and liked it. So, the idea was, well, we can expand on that and do a little bit more, and that would be fun. So, I wanted to bring what I'm passionate about, and that's motorsports and racing, and bring that to the city in a big, in a strong, meaningful way, so I teamed up with Senator Maynard, who's a motorsports and racing enthusiast and drafted and brought through in a successful passage, a legislative bill that allows for organized and sanctioned motorsports events to be held on municipal streets. So, and none of this was able to be announced, everything was in, you know, some strong planning stages prior to COVID-19 crisis. And so, the idea was to turn a section of Kingdom Avenue into a drag strip with, you know, jersey barriers and bringing in a sanctioned drag racing promoter and, and have a motorsports festival. We would have added the, a little bit of an expansion on the go-karts, probably would have added a car show, maybe even a donut competition. So, that was gonna be really neat and fun, and I was fairly certain it was gonna happen. But, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we're gonna have to make cuts to events, and city resources are gonna be significantly challenged by the budget crisis, so you know, we're not gonna be able to do it this year, some, but perhaps next year, regardless if I'm on city council or not. I think that's a really fun and exciting event that had a lot of support. And so, you know, I'm passionate about racing, and that's kind of how it's impacted my council term.
What do you like to do in your off time?
I mean, I like lots of different things, but I like racing, obviously, and a lot of different things that go along with that, and, you know, custom car building and hot rods, but I like yard sales. And, you know, I'm just a human, I like gardening, I mean, we're, we may have partisan differences, but what I've discovered is almost all of us are, you know, almost the same. And if you put the political stuff aside, we have so much in common, and it's easy to be friends with a lot of people that you have strong political differences with.
So, Eric, what is the most unique about you as a person?
Oh, I mean, it's hard to say. Everyone's unique. As a political person, you know, being someone who was, who's served time in prison in corrections, significant time, five years, and, and to go from something that the society says is just terrible, horrible, and need to be removed for the public well-being, you know, it has an impact on your psyche, and it has, it makes you feel you know, really poorly about yourself. And personally, as a person uniquely, I went from that to being elected to represent the entire neighborhood. the entire neighborhood, you know, and in the legislative branch. So to go from what, you know, a lawbreaker, you know, or say what it is, it's, you know, a person who's committed crimes is a criminal, so to go from that to lawmaker, you know, to, it, it's, it's unique, and that's only, I've only seen it one other time. It's successfully done in West Virginia, and the former mayor, Bridgeport, is convicted felon, and so it, it's unique, and certainly allows a perspective that, that's probably different than most people's as far as elected office holders go.
A reformed felon, right?
I feel pretty good. I mean, I, I lobbied on, on behalf of several criminal justice organizations for the First Step Act, and they would present me in Congress and a few other, you know, different meetings and stuff as, you know, summary pedestal example, and, and it was like, well, my God, sometimes I know better. So I do my best, I've come a long ways.
Well, with that, we'd like to give you the time to tell us and voters anything that you think we've missed or didn't touch on, including how to get more information on your campaign, how to get in touch with you, donate, get involved, or et cetera.
Well, my, my phone number's always been really easy. I've been pretty good about offering feedback online when questions are asked, so, you know, just get ahold of me on Facebook, it's easy, my number's listed, reach out to me on Facebook if you want to text me. So, and I'd love for a few people who've never heard from, to, to clear my district, to just, you know, give me a phone call. But when, when I do hear from people, it's usually just run-of-the-mill stuff, you know, you need a curb or something's going on, so I'm easily accessible. I've not put too much effort in my campaign, so, you know, I don't know how to support it other than go to the voting polls in person and perform your civic duty as a citizen, so. Whatever the results are, I'm gonna welcome and be satisfied. I got a wonderful life awaiting me as soon as my civic service is complete, and, and whatever happens as far as who's elected in the future, different candidates, everything, I think, is, is gonna generally move towards a, you know, a brighter future for Parkersburg, and I think all candidates that are running for office have a lot of good qualities to bring to the table. So we'll let the, let the voters decide everything, and, and I think Parkersburg's gonna be, you know, in pretty good shape moving forward.
Congratulations on your new baby, by the way.
Thank you, that's kind of you. Yeah, that's a lot of stuff going on in my life, and, but I'm, I'm really happy, I'm in a good place, and, you know, regardless of the election results, I'm a better person than I was, I think, four years ago, and my life's better off. And for me, serving as much time in prison or in public service personally evens the scales, so, you know, I can close out my young adult life and be happy that, you know, I felt like I made some, I, I gave a little bit back for, for being a, you know, not, not so, not so good of a citizen. So I'm really satisfied and just happy about a lot of things, so, and I appreciate you guys allowing this forum and this format, and I really hope you expand on it, this doesn't need to go away. I think you can do some meet the press-type events, you can do all kinds of different things where you have a city council member who comes on and just answers questions and tries to offer some sort of insight about what's going on down City Hall. So congratulations, this was really good, and it had a great name, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you for making the time to talk with us this morning, especially because you've got that new baby girl. I know your time is, is very valuable, so we appreciate you coming and talking to us. Thank you, and everyone, wash those hands.